We don't have any action on closed session items tonight, so we'll go on to our next information item. Dr. Dupree?
Yes ma'am, this is a number, I think, four in our continuing series on the career technical education planning. So Meredith is back tonight with an update on the plan. So Meredith?
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Dupree. Thank you, Mrs. James, and the rest of the Board of Trustees. And I appreciate you letting me present again tonight in reconvening. I want to start us off by kind of reflecting on where we left off last time. That was October. I know it's the end of November, so just to bring us back around for a minute. All of the work that happened in the CTE task force really centered around several guiding principles. The guiding principles really talked about the student accessibility to programs, offering advanced coursework through CTE, and that could be dual credit and/or opportunities for students to earn industry certifications. That was a main focus for us. Allowing flexibility of our spaces, any spaces that we design, whether it be updating current facilities or building new facilities, the flexibility in design space really will allow us to respond to industry changes and industry updates over time. The next one is how we can better create industry partnerships. We feel like this is an area where we can really expand and grow our CTE programs, and those industry partnerships are everything from opportunities for us to offer internships for students, externships for teachers, and/or enterprise opportunities for our students. And then finally, one of the things that came out of all of our task force review was our opportunity to use our CTE facilities to further develop our staff. And this is something that we really have not done, and we really haven't explored prior to convening this committee. And the reason that came up in this committee work really centered around us looking at bringing all of our spaces and our opportunities up to date with regard to industry standard equipment so that it would better service many of our students and our staff. In September and October, we visited about the growth and the development and where we need to head with CTE. These are some major points of feedback that we received from all of you at the October meeting that drove kind of our thought process through the end of October and November. One of the things that we picked up on was that it was very important that we offer programs in a manner that best prepares students for their futures. And I use the term futures because that's not the same for all students. And we really can't dictate what those futures are. For some students, it will be college, four-year colleges right away. For some students, it will be junior college. For some students, it may be workforce, and then a combination thereof. So we really took away from our conversations the need to offer programs in a manner that will help students reach whatever their goal might be. Again, student accessibility to programs was something that we discussed at length in October. You also talked extensively about using our resources wisely, and that that really was more than just our financial resources. When our committee reconvened, we looked at it from a financial resource, but we also looked at it from a people resource and our human resources as well, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. And we heard loud and clear that you want us to make sure that we are communicating with the public and selling our CTE programs. And this is something that we know we can improve upon. We are looking at ways to do that. I think we've put together a very strategic plan of how to do that and do that better so that we are marketing to our current community members. We are marketing to our potential business community members as well. And then finally, we heard loud and clear the ability to grow our programs over time, that we know that we can't do something and do it full out. We don't have the student engagement yet. How do we grow these programs? How do we set ourselves up to grow programs that are responsive to what the industry needs are? I'd like to start by addressing the information on existing facilities. Really, these recommendations are divided into two parts. One related to the existing facilities, and the second piece is any new facility. So for right now, I want to talk about the existing facility information. In previous documents, in September and October, we provided you an extensive list of work that we were recommending be done at all 11 comprehensive high schools. That was very lengthy. And looking at the conversations that we had in October, we went back to that list, and we did look at what does our space allow us to do. We spent a lot of time walking with Mr. Cleaver's group, walking the buildings, really studying what those campuses need. We went back, we looked at the facilities master plan, and we really looked at what are our campuses' expectations and what can we handle? What have we been built and designed to have at our campuses? What drove a lot of our decisions were how we let students access equipment, and industry standard equipment. We know that industry standard equipment access is critical because that's what it takes to get students to the next level of earning industry certifications. So for example, one of the major recommendations that you saw previously related to the ventilation and electrical work at all 11 high schools. That dealt strongly with the welding programs and accessing, students having access to welders. Currently, our 11 campuses are set up to offer either two welders, and one campus has six welders. We just do not have the ventilation and electrical at those campuses to offer a one-to-two ratio, meaning one welder to every two students in the classroom. We don't have the space. And really, that is one of the things that drove a change that we'll discuss in just a moment. The safety of accessing that equipment is very important. If we put that many welders in a room, what does the safety look like? What does the space allow us to do? And that is space from our health science classrooms to our ag science labs to our food science labs. What does our current space existing allow us to work within? And then finally, we were able to drill down and really look at some costs. One of the first costs that came back after our last October meeting, looking at that welding shop expansions, if you will, the ventilation and the electrical work was close to $500,000 at each campus. So that's significant, and that was much greater than anything than we had expected upfront. All of those things led to a change from October till now. I know that you've had your document, and I hope you've had a chance to look through it, but you'll notice that we've backed off on that. Really, what we have done is we went back, we looked at the cost, we looked at are we using our resources wisely? We looked at what courses were we trying to offer the students that would require those updates? And it centered around that welding program. We already have a welding program at our Technical Education Center. So what students were doing was taking some welding courses at their existing campus as a sophomore and maybe a junior. It was not enough time on welding machines to get them any type of certification. So the committee really felt strongly about taking all of your recommendations and looking, could we do this better? Could we be smarter about using our resources? And we looked at the course offerings that TEA changed at the end of June, and they finally came out with our TECS, were released in October, at the beginning of October. So we were able to really study that. And we feel that by moving all of the welding courses to a Technical Education Center, we could better service more students, and we could better use our resources. Because at $500,000 per campus to offer one or two courses, is that really the smartest thing? So that is why the major change and shift from doing all of the work at 11 major high schools. I will say that that does not mean that we don't have some work to do at some campuses. What you see on the overhead is the three campuses that we still feel like really must have work done in order to offer the CTE programs that we've discussed at those campuses. And I'll take just a brief moment to discuss those because it is specific when you look at just those three. At Austin High School, they are currently using a CTE lab for the JROTC program. The JROTC program, we do have some stipulations that dictate what their room size should be and what their office space should be and things like that. They did not have that space already built. And they have a small room. It won't handle their class size. They have some office space issues. And so for us to offer the CTE programs, we really need to reclaim that space. So we need to take back that room. That means we've got to do something for our JROTC program. The room that they are currently using is set up very well for our computer-aided drafting programs and our drafting, all of the stuff that leads into our architectural and design. So we evaluated, does it make sense to build a new CTE lab or build a specific ROTC space? Because of the location of the room, it is attached to the dirty shop lab where the machinery is. We just did not feel like it was in the best interest to recommend building a whole new CTE space when we already have one that is functional and will handle our programs and service our programs well. Instead, we are recommending the consideration of building an appropriate ROTC space at that facility. At Bush High School, their dirty shop lab where their machinery is, for some reason, it has tile in that room, and that is a major safety concern. The best that we can figure out is that when it was built, there was no tile, and at one time, the room was repurposed when they didn't have the program, and they laid tile. And I can't tell you that that's 100% certainty. I can tell you that originally, it wasn't built with tile. It now has tile, and we really need to remove that tile for safety purposes in that room. And so that is a continued recommendation. And finally, it takes us to Ridge Point High School. Ridge Point High School has, if you reflect back on what we discussed in October, has several issues, and it all relate to the amount of space. Their rooms, once we walked that campus and we really dug deep into looking at what their room spaces were, we feel like there are some rooms that can be better utilized for CTE space that were originally designed for that. It does require that they shift a little bit of teachers that are right now sitting in one of our arts and audio/video classrooms because it's a huge facility. But they have a classroom that they could re-shift those teachers to so that we could use our space. That doesn't answer the question for our existing dirty shop lab. It is very, very small. And while we would not be offering welding at that campus long-term, we would still continue to offer those construction classes and need access to that equipment. And so for safety purposes, we really would like to recommend that you consider adding space. The way that building is laid out, there is some opportunity for us to just add on to that existing space. And those are all things that can be talked about long-term when we look at if this is a direction that the board decides that you would like for us to take. That brings us to the next piece of the recommendation, which is how we offer the advanced career and technical education courses and what a centralized facility might look like. I'll refresh your memory just a little bit, that our current existing Technical Education Center is roughly 35,000 square feet. And it currently can house about 600 students in a day. So that's just to give you a frame of mind of where we are. It's 35,000 square feet, and it can service about 600 students in a day. With that in mind, we really looked at what is the best direction for this district in order to offer advanced CTE courses and bring them up to the level that we discussed in September, of trying to be a state leader in these programs. We looked at building capacity. What is it that we really need to offer these programs? What is the square footage that we need to have in order to have the flexibility and industry standard equipment in these spaces? We kept in mind that we wanted the potential for expansion over time. And so that goes back to the flexibility of space, that we want to make sure that whatever the decision is, that we do it so that we can respond to industry changes as they come about. We know that drive times are critical. I'll remind you that in September, we talked about how we reduced the bus cost because we only do a halftime shift right now. But because of that, our main focus was to increase the instructional minutes in that classroom. So drive time is very critical in order to keep those instructional minutes in the classroom. And then finally, the accessibility to community and business partners, and this is twofold. And the accessibility to the community is because we would like to become a state leader by offering internships and enterprise opportunities through these programs that we offer. And we want our business partners to have access to this facility. We want our community to access the facility, but most importantly, we realize that we're servicing our business partners by creating a workforce that they need. With all of those things in mind, we moved forward to making the next piece of this recommendation. In October, we discussed the consideration of having one site versus two sites. We evaluated that. We also evaluated and looked at what the recommendations might be with regard to facilities. And I know that it's written in the document, but I'll talk to you just for a brief moment about what we considered. We really considered repurposing existing space. Progressive High School, for example, that facility, was that a possibility for us to repurpose and utilize for Career and Technical Education Center or a Center for Advanced Learning? We looked at Lake Olympia Middle School, and I'll let you know the reason we considered Lake Olympia is because in the Dejawn Richter evaluation of facility spaces, they had made that recommendation. So we really dug deep in looking at that. We also considered the Julie Rivers location where Wharton County used to be housed. All of these facilities hold some potential. And so it would be unfair to say that they don't hold any potential at all. For example, if you think about the Progressive High School, that used to be a Walmart, therefore, they have a space that used to be used for automotive. So that facility already has some potential there. However, it's pretty landlocked, and the amount of square footage in that facility would not allow us to expand to facilitate the programs as we've discussed. We think at this time, it would be in our best interest to recommend one site in a location that's the theoretical center of the district, and I'll talk about that in just a second. We really want to design those facilities so that they meet dual credit opportunities and industry certification. The reason we're recommending one site at this time is because we have to take time to build up these programs. We currently don't even have the community that is well aware of what the programs are. And so does it make sense for us to build two facilities? And that comes into play with the human resources, how difficult it is to hire the teachers that are needed at those locations. And so the committee feels strongly that we'd like for you to consider one site so that we can do those programs really well. We also acknowledge that over time, in the next five to 10 years, we may have to come back and say, our district has grown so much that we need to duplicate those type of programs again. So we're not taking away the possibility of long-term having more than one site, but at this time, with the human resource need to fill these positions across the state, we feel like one site would be a better option for us. The theoretical center to the district, the reason that is important is because of those drive times and those instructional minutes. And so we can look at this building as having been the center of the facility at some point in time. When you talk about access from all of the schools, your Appendix D in your document really looked at different locations. And we talked with Mr. Cleaver's group, we talked with the Transportation Department, we looked through what it looks like if we go to the Julie Rivers site. How does that time change versus if we were to go to Lake Olympia? Or if we were to put something that was near Highway 90, Highway 6, and Highway 59? This is relatively centralized. And so Appendix D gives you some drive time information, and that drive time information is not mileage. It really was done with the Transportation Department of consideration of how long a kid would be on a bus. And so that's not mileage. I just want you to keep that in mind. We really would like to make sure that students are not in buses for 50 minutes or more because that really hurts our instructional minutes. We've experienced that. Mr. Kenzura, who's with us tonight, talked a lot about how difficult that was prior to our change, that we had students coming and going. So that's one of the major reasons for recommending a center for advanced learning in the theoretical center of the district. By building one facility, keeping in mind that we are now recommending that we move all of the welding programs over to a centralized facility, this is the list that you've seen several times. However, I'd like to point out the addition of the ag and natural resources component. Ag and natural resources has some welding components in it. But by moving that to the center, we have some unintended great consequences of some information that you all brought up in October, which was how do we look at natural resource opportunities for this district? With the changes in TECS that happened in July, the ag, food, and natural resource program area expanded so that we have some natural resource and oil production course offerings that are now possible. They will come online in 2017, so we have a little bit of time to build them out. By moving the ag program over to the center, we now have the ability to offer some of those innovative, and they're not innovative from the standpoint of TEA has already approved them, but they are first-time courses. So we would take the chance of being on the cutting edge to offer some natural resources and oil production classes at a center. If we take that ag and natural resources component out and put that back at the campuses, we're left with how do we do a program that needs access to those machines and has a very large expenditure associated with what that equipment is? And so that's a give or take, depending on what we want to look at. You'll notice that the credit union stays up there, and that is something that we've talked about. We do have a local credit union that is on board. I will tell you that depending on how we proceed with that, there might be some opportunity for them to fund a piece of whatever that credit union building space would look like, either at a center and/or if we decided to make any changes to existing campuses. There is the possibility of putting credit centers at multiple locations. So that leaves us with where are we, and what do we do next, and what do you need more information on? Our next steps are that we have listened intently to your desire for us to do a better job of communication. So we've spent some time in November developing CTE program promotional materials. We will release our first video next week, next Monday, and that's the same time, I believe, that the board is going to come back and maybe have some more discussion about if you need more information before you consider anything for a vote. On December 8th and 9th, we will have our community information evenings. And we already have this set up. We'll be at the Annex on the 8th, and then on the 9th, we'll be over at Bowie Middle School presenting to the community. And I know Dr. Dupree's already sent information out, and the Community Relations Department is working with us. There'll be an all-call-out to our 7th, 8th, and 9th and 10th grade families that starts later on this week, and then we'll follow that up to ensure that we're communicating clearly to the community about what we're doing. December 14th, we would like to request action from the board regarding these recommendations. And I want to be very specific about what those recommendations are. The recommendations are twofold. It is, do we want to recommend updating the three facilities as has been presented? And/or do you want to recommend one facility at this time? You'll notice that we don't have a specific location identified in here. We think that there is still some opportunity and work around that, depending on what direction you all would like for us to take. There are several questions that I've received of, can we scale this back? What does our space look like? And I talk about our space requirements for the programs. We've built out what we think the best space requirements are. That puts us at about 200,000 square feet of building space. We understand that that's the top edge. We understand that there might be some room for discussion of do we reduce down 15 classrooms? The proposal is really to develop a center for advanced learning so that we, as a district, can utilize that space to offer advanced courses, maybe not just in CTE. It may be that we're able to offer some advanced coursework to all of our students at a centralized facility that would better service our students as a whole. So there are opportunities for us to have discussion of, Meredith, we think that you've gone huge, and we want you to scale back, or do we really want to offer all of these programs? The committee feels strongly about the programs that we've recommended are needed in order to get our district to a point of servicing our community as a whole. That's our students, our staff, our parents, and our workforce. At this time, I would love to hear feedback. I would love to take questions so that we can come back to you and answer what we can this evening and prepare so that you are able to consider.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wadasek. I'm sure we have some comments and questions. Mr. Rosenthal?
I have lots of them.
Okay.
Okay, so if you can go back to this.
Yes, sir.
Your first three recommendations. So at Austin High School, the CTE Architecture Room, if we were to have a central facility or this advanced Center for Learning, we wouldn't really need to do this, correct?
These recommendations are to service the freshman and sophomore courses. So regardless of a center or not, we currently do not have the space to offer the freshman and sophomore courses in adequately.
So what other schools have that?
So all of our schools have architecture and construction.
With the exception of Austin.
Austin High School has the freshman course taught in a very tiny room that does not have the computer-aided drafting.
Right now, then this is the only high school that really doesn't have very good
Right.
conditions for that class. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, got that.
So I'll use Marshall High School as an example, where that's a brand-new program that we've rolled out this year. We've rolled out that program so they are only offering the same course that Austin High School is offering. Next year, they will move in their computers, but they have the space.
Okay, great. So let me kind of roll through some of the things that I've highlighted on the plan that was sent out on, I guess, previous Friday. Just going to roll through my highlights here. Okay. So this would be on page 19 of that document. You say that it's important to note that a centralized facility will not address expenses associated with dual credit courses. Determination of fees is based on a student's physical home address and criteria, you know, whatever. But then in a memo, I think you answered Garell's question, saying that because of the split between Wharton and HCC, all that stuff is going to be handled most likely by Texas State Technical.
In offering these programs, if we go with Texas State Technical College as our dual-credit program for CTE courses, they've agreed to what they're offering all of their districts, which is $50 flat fee for all of the courses in one year. So our current students are, for $50, receiving seven credit hours this semester, this year. Whereas if we dual-credit those programs with HCC and/or Wharton, that's not the case. And we did ask the question, we contacted HCC and Wharton, can one professor be teaching for both colleges at a time?
They said no.
And the answer is no.
Which is crazy.
Yes, sir.
But that's government for you.
But that's their answer, so.
Right, but I think on that particular thing, so one professor can't be teaching, but if it was a Wharton, say, a Wharton professor teaching, any student can get credit for that, but somebody that's out of the Wharton District would need to pay
A different fee.
A different fee.
Yes, sir.
Or vice versa, which is actually what we have going on right now in several of our high schools. So it's not really a change, I don't think.
So there's a workaround?
There is, and presumably, there's an ability or opportunity for negotiation because you could work with whichever college who's going to give you the best deal.
Yeah, it's kind of funny because it sounds like you have three institutions kind of potentially, you know, bidding for the same.
But I thought, and I thought that technical, I thought that Texas State Technical College focused on certain programs and then farmed out maybe their English and some other things to partner with Wharton or something else like that. So when you said TSTC only, I was a little, I didn't really follow what that was talking about.
Texas State Technical College is who, at this point, we've been successful in getting MOUs put together for our CTE programs because they've come to the table and they've worked well with us at this point. They are building another facility, and some changes happened with Texas State Technical College a year ago. And some changes happened with Texas State Technical College a year ago in December so that a student who takes classes from any TSTC institution can go all over the state to any of their facilities. That wasn't the case. Wharton County and HCC have some of the same programs that Texas State. They don't all offer identical programs. But in trying to work with them, that location piece and getting an MOU on our CTE courses, the reason that CTE courses present such an issue is because nobody has one standard of what does it take for a teacher to be certified to teach at their college? And it's different. So to be an adjunct professor for HCC in English is very different than to be an adjunct professor in HCC for a workforce industry. And at this point in time, over the past year and a half, we've just been most successful with keeping our CTE programs with TSTC. And then that would standardize one fee for all of our students.
I would, I would interject, that is our, our current thinking based on what we know today. Both of the other institutions, HCC and WCJC, have the opportunity, if they want to waive fees, reduce fees, they can work with us as other community colleges do throughout the state with other school districts to make it more advantageous for our students if they're willing and able to do so within their budgetary and administrative structures. The other aspect is we do, and again, this is why this is still, we have found TSTC to be a great partner on the, on the workforce so far because their funding structure is also different from the state level. And that's something that's an advantage that they have over the other two, is that they're funded very differently than HCC and WCJC. But I, but also we have the ability as a district to remedy this in one unique way that politically is probably not the best, but it's worthy of discussion as we move through the planning. And that's we can adopt one provider organ, for the whole district if we choose to do that. Historically, we don't like to talk about that too much, honestly, because we want to maintain strong partnerships with WCJC and HCC. But ultimately, as an organization, we want to do what's best for our students. So there may come a time we're gonna have to have that discussion.
Okay.
About if we want to move in that direction. But today, I think we're, we're putting, we're floating TSTC as a primary partner because of the way they've worked with us, because of their funding. There's many advantages to partnering with them. But that's not to say we wouldn't consider, as we plan, as we more fully develop this plan, to partner with one of the other local institutions.
Okay, so there's some workarounds and, okay.
I, I will add to that conversation just a little bit to expand upon and what Dr. DePree said. TSTC has also been wonderful to work with us in regards to what a student has to do to be admitted into those dual-credit programs. And that differs from HCC to Wharton County Junior College and TSTC. So for example, TSTC does not require our students to pass the Texas Success Initiative test, the TSI test, before entering into our CTE programs. At last conversations, that was not something that we were able to work out with Wharton County Junior College and HCC. That plays a major role in us offering this to a lot of students who may not be ready to test at a certain level. If, if a student finishes their program, TSTC program, and gets their Level 1 certificate from TSTC, they have the option to go on and do more. And eventually, when they take their academic courses, they will have to, to meet that TSI readiness. But right now, it really services our students well to not have to meet that before we enroll them in dual-credit.
So because a, a student may not be able to pass that test, you're kind of limiting them getting, even getting into some CTE program?
If, if we had a partnership that required them to pass that, we would be limiting them.
So, so they may, they may not be very good at algebra, but they want to be a welder, and they wouldn't be able to do that because they couldn't pass, okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I, I get that.
Thank you. Said it well.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I have a few more things here.
Okay.
So this credit union where you talk about this joint funding for building. So that's what you just mentioned, that there might be. And I know we talked about this back in October, you know, and, and I guess there was some excitement about, you know, you know, banking opportunities or credit union opportunities. And my only concern with that is, is that, you know, I don't know how, how much of a fu-, a future that is for, for employment, for really good employment, I should say. When you look up and down Highway 6, there's three, four banks on every single corner, if not more. And at some point, if in, interest rates ever get back to somewhat normal, I think a lot of, there's, I think a lot of those are gonna go away because they're gonna be buying each other and whatnot. And so I just worry and just, let's just think about how much opportunity there really is. And, and again, I don't know exactly, don't remember what you had in mind, is this was training to be a bank teller? I mean, you know, I, I don't think that those are necessarily growth jobs. That is my opinion, but, you know. Okay, and then you, you talk about the Center for, this is on page 20 if you're following along at home. The Center for Advanced Learning has potential to develop and grow effective personnel and provide a collaborative, efficient, effective learning community for the broader public. So I guess, to me, I think that's maybe getting a little bit ahead. I would rather focus just on students.
Yes, sir.
Now, obviously, if there's, if you're gonna have a, a building and, and a building and equipment sitting vacant all summer long and there's a potential to use it, you know, I, I, I get that, but I, you know, I know you put that in there and said, okay, it's potential. You know, it is potential, but I hope we're kind of keeping it.
Go slow, do things well at the beginning.
Let's focus on one thing and, and do that well before we worry about that. So. Okay. Okay, so explain, explain which, and I think you just touched on this a few minutes ago. Because you mentioned this here, and it was, it was also in, in the memo, I believe, you know, your example about multi-variable calculus. I mean, what would be the ru-, the reason that, that a student would go there rather than at their own high school? Is it just because, I guess is one of the, one of the main reasons is the, the availability of, of teachers who can teach that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But, but what, is that, I mean, how would that, how would that, what would that look like? Would that be, you know, kids would all go there at the end of the day or an extra period? Or, you know, because I can't see kids getting on a bus to travel even 20 or 30 minutes just for one cla-, I mean, how would that even work?
It would be half-day programs. So if we bus kids over there for anything, it would have to be on the half-day rotation. As we bus kids right now from existing campuses or home campuses, they're not completely full buses. So we, we have some potential to grow. So there are 15 regular classrooms, if you will, built into the specs of, of what we would like for you to consider so that we can really look at those courses that maybe are one-offs, multi-variable calculus, which I could certainly not teach. But maybe we have two or three students from each campus that could take that course. We would also offer some additional coursework because of what our programs require. We would be offering the English 3 and 4 like we do now. We could really look at, can we offer some AP coursework that we don't have the teaching units because they don't meet the same requirements to offer those AP or dual-credit at a home facility, putting that at a central location? So it may be that Bryce leaves Austin High School his junior year and takes multi-variable calculus senior year and an AP statistics class because we have a teacher that can teach that and his English 3 course at the center. Maybe he's not really ever gonna walk into a CTE room, which is the reason that you'll hear me call it a Center for Advanced Learning to some degree. I think we have the potential to utilize it in such a way that we're servicing our district in a broader capacity than just a technical education center.
Okay, if, if you could, you know, over the next few weeks or a couple of weeks, whatever, if, if there's a way you can show us maybe some data on how many students and how many, in how many of our high schools are actually taking that? And, because I would think most of those are at the academy. You know, most of them, maybe not all. But I would, I would think the larger percentage would be at the, at the Math and Science, or the, yeah, Math and Science Academy. And then I had one other comment. So you were talking about the Julia Rivers Road, Julie Rivers Road facility.
Yes.
And you were, you're talking about the location lacks visibility. And I don't know, I guess the, the impression I got from reading that was that we want this to be this, you know, big fancy thing. And yeah, that would be nice, but, you know, I'm not sure that the taxpayers really care that much about visibility. I think they want to make sure that kids get trained in something that they can then go out and get a job in rather than, you know, building some Taj Mahal or something, you know, that's been promoted before. So let's just kind of think about that, too.
Yes, sir.
So, because that, that's, and again, I don't know what your thoughts were when you wrote that or, but that, that's the impression that I got from, from reading it, so.
So when we talk about visibility, to some degree, we really want to make sure that we're developing those internship opportunities and we're developing those enterprise opportunities. And there are many businesses around there that could facilitate a lunchtime crowd at our culinary arts, if you will. But from the larger perspective, when the committee really reviewed, is this the type of place that people would see and access our enterprise opportunities? So we can definitely make that more clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Rice?
Ms. Watasek, do you have a location in mind or are you not ready to disclose it at this time yet?
Well, I think that keeping the idea of it being near 59, 6, and 90, and the reason that that location is ideal is that it's accessible by all of the schools in a relatively straight route. It's a pretty safe travel route if we explore the opportunity of letting students drive to and from the location. It also provides us with the opportunity that if in five to seven to 10 years we see that there is a need for a second facility, could we come in and do something at a location that makes sense to split the district so that we were accessing two facilities? And so if we, if we stay relatively near this facility, 59, 6, 90, we have the potential to build farther out down, where Ridge Point is continuing to expand. I'm not sure that we've seen the end of the growth for sure out there. And so in five to seven years, when we've got a program that looks really good, maybe we're ready to do that. And this location central near here would give us the opportunity to place another one somewhere that would make sense in splitting the district.
Okay. And, and so, just so I understand, that students enrolled in one of these programs would either, would they report to their home campus in the morning and then ride the bus over to this facility for half a day and then go back? And vice versa, in the afternoon, they catch it at lunchtime and, okay.
That is our current model. And we, we do not currently allow very many students to drive to the facility.
Okay.
Because it is completely landlocked with no parking. A new facility of this type, we would want to build a little bit better so that some students would have the ability to drive if they wanted to. And in keeping that in mind, when we talked with the Transportation Department, we really wanted to look at safe routes for students to access a facility of this nature.
Well, I really, I think the idea of consolidating welding classes, for example, is, is a good idea because there's some economies of scale there. And especially getting the welding instructors, having them available. So all of that can be supervised in one location. We could have pretty strict safety procedures in place for that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. George?
Excuse me. The first question I have is, do we look at, like at a state level, who else is operating successfully a CTE center? Have we looked at it? Or do we, are we following some kind of models from? Because it's always good to learn from other people what they're doing. And are we doing anything like that?
Absolutely. We have spent, the task force has spent an extensive amount of time looking not only just in-state at what we're doing around the state, similar districts to our size, districts that are near us. And how they're offering it. But we've spent some time, as a matter of fact, right before Thanksgiving, I was in New Orleans for a national conference. We were able to visit with some people from Arizona that have a phenomenal model in place. We definitely don't want to start from ground zero. I mean, that, we, we definitely.
Yeah, did you visit any facilities?
Yes, we have visited many, many facilities.
The reason I ask that, I, I just came back from the Leadership House, we, one of the sessions. And we visited a tech center, CTE center at Frisco ISD and spent a lot of time there. I wasn't sure about a single facility. Now I'm hundred percent, personally, that's my opinion. Personally, I'm 100% convinced a single facility is the best way to do it. And, and also I will ask you or look into the, the culinary, culinary group, the students are running a restaurant there, you know, successfully. I mean, they are, they are, with their, with their effort, they have, they have a courtroom there. They have the health science area. It's a, they're already running out of space and they're looking to build another one. And this is one of the fastest-growing districts in Dallas area. And I was, never been to a facility like that. I was very impressed, and they have a, a transportation system in place. And, and also they allow students to drive, they have parking and everything. And they actually, all their high school students have access to this facility. And, and I think it is, if, if we have something like that, whatever you're presenting, from what I saw, what I experienced for all day, we spent, almost all days we spent there. And this is phenomenal. And I was just thinking, why we don't have something like that? So I personally feel, based on my experience, I personally feel it is a phenomenal idea to have a single facility with somewhat, somewhat centrally located. And, and also, like you said, thinking of future. And, you know, some, we, we are going to run out of that space and I could almost guarantee, maybe 10 years from now, maybe another facility because that's the future. And also, I, I personally believe the, the resources are better used there. And accessibility, every high school can spend time, the students can come and spend time there. I was very impressed with the way they ran that facility. I was very impressed. And, and I, I think, you know, probably bringing some of those examples, you know, somebody's, some people are doing successfully these things. Some, actually quoting some of the schools and bringing what they're doing for our better understanding about this whole idea might be a good, good way to get the approval from the public also. Because like Dave said, we had this discussion in the past and a lot of discussion happened in the past and stuff like that. So, so people still feel, feel like, you know, we are going to build the, the, the term used Taj Mahal kind of thing. And the, the Frisco one doesn't look like a Taj Mahal.
No, no.
To begin with. It's a small one, really, if you think about it. But I'm very excited. We are looking in that direction and doing something of that nature so that our children can benefit and generation to come, really, that's what.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mrs. Tossin?
So thank you for coming back and giving us those details. Generally, I would say, from my perspective, I support the single facility for a lot of the reasons that KP just talked about. And, and I, you know, so generally, I support it. Here are a couple of concerns or just questions that I have. And, and I generally support the 200 square feet. I mean, I, I don't have a problem. I want us to make sure that we build something that can accommodate our students' needs. And I think, I said that last time, several of us said that last time. I think that, that that's our focus. I agree with Dave that, that we, it doesn't need to be fancy. But I would, I do think we need to have the space to accommodate our students. So first of all, location. I ju-, it's not, I think it's probably a good idea, see what you're saying about having it at 6 and 90 and 59, making this drive every day, it's far, really, really far, for those of us that. making this drive every day, it's far, really, really far, for those of us that live way out on the east side of the district. So we might just want to keep that in mind. But on the flip side of it, I did have the other question of if we're going to build one now, because we talked last time about having it accessible, one on each side of the district. Well, when we get ready to expand, if you have one that's in the center, then where do you put the second one? So I get that, you know, that kind of, that kind of conflict. So, and I probably need to think about it a little bit more. But from a location standpoint, that's still very hard for kids on the east side of the district to get to. With university being open, you know, it makes it a lot easier, but, so I don't know. I guess I would have to look at where specifically you're talking about and I would want to look at that a little bit more. Would we still use the Dulles High School, the Dulles facility? Or are we talking about shutting that one down and?
We're, we're talking about not using the existing facility for CTE programs. And so then that raises the question of what would we do with that facility? And I will tell you that, that while Dulles has a lot of, appears to be nice space, things like their health science program that's floating between classrooms that maybe shouldn't be used for a health science classroom would be able to go back over there. I have had extensive conversations with multiple other groups in the district about how we could better utilize that facility if we weren't taking the whole thing out. And I'll, I'll give you a great example. When I visited with the Special Education Department, we talked about the Adult Transition Program. And we talked about the fact that that has a kitchen and that has the potential for us to, to maybe put things like their print shop for their adult transition program in that facility that's centrally located where people can access it when students are ready to try those transitions. And so we would, we would be able to look at how we could use that facility to service additional programs or different programs that would then maybe potentially free up some space at existing campuses. So that now we're regaining some seats at existing campuses that are housing that adult transition opportunities. And so that is one of the things that I've worked with Dr. Hill on extensively.
So we currently have those transition programs on all eleven campuses?
We, we have multiple diff, we have different types of transition programs. And I don't, I don't want to speak to what those special ed programs are because that's a little outside my realm for sure. But we talked extensively about things like, they have a printing shop that they run out of Marshall High School. And so the students that are located over there get to access that print shop. So we talked about, could we not put that at this center and maybe have students that were ready to do those adult transitions come over there? Could they not potentially operate a coffee shop? Chandra is here who operates our culinary program. They run a restaurant out of the current culinary, but it only services the Dulles High School and the tech ed students. So that's the potential for us to use that facility to service a different group of students.
Okay, that, yeah, okay, so that's interesting. As we're thinking through that, and I'm going to go back to what I always go, always go back to, is let's make sure we're not separating our kids out that are in special ed and sending them off to a separate. I mean, if we're going to build a CTE center, it needs to accommodate all of our kids. And, you know, a print, whether it's a print shop or a coffee shop or whatever, I think we should look at, at, you know, making sure all of our kids can access that CTE and not separating them out. So that, and that's just, you know, I'm not saying you're thinking that, but I always just want to keep that at the forefront. Because sometimes things sound really good in theory and then we look, you know, we look up and say, well, really what we're doing is segregating them and I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't get there.
Thank you.
So the fifty-nine million dollars of the fifty-eight nine seven five, that's to build the new facility, is that correct? Just, just to build the, not for the updates on the three high schools that are listed?
The fifty-eight nine seventy-five is to build. But if, if you flip back, and I'm sorry, I don't have the page number exactly in my head, so give me just a minute.
Twenty-nine, maybe?
Twenty-nine, maybe?
Twenty-nine is where that number is, but, did you give us a estimate for the?
No, we, we have the estimate in here from our previous one. Of what it would take to build the other ones. I'm sorry, I don't, I'll find it in just a second for you. Yes, page twenty-five. The bottom of page twenty-five, thank you.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
About a, it's about a million dollars to do the other project.
Okay.
The other projects.
So we're looking at a little over sixty million to build the new facility and to do the upgrades to the three campuses. So, and what is our, was our bond, what was our bond? Was it around?
I think it was about fifty-nine.
Thought it was around sixty?
I always rounded it up to sixty. I think it's around fifty-nine million.
Okay. So I just wanted to be cognizant and make sure that we're within what we estimated.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think that's all I have. The only, the only other thing I would throw out there, I, I don't, I, I think the idea of the banks being in the schools is a good idea. I probably agree with Dave's assessment, but I like the idea of kids that are going to go into finance or kids that are, and just generally having that, that hands-on where kids can deal with money and banking. And I feel like somehow we're losing that, everything's online, so.
It's, it's definitely, and we've looked at multiple models. And Chris and I in New Orleans this past week were, had the pleasure of hearing how another state rolled this out. And I know Dr. DePree's had experience rolling it out. There are many districts around here that have done it and so it's been very interesting to see. There are some interesting teaks that say, students have to learn how to operate an ATM machine. How do you learn how to operate an ATM machine if you're not doing that? So it's very bizarre and it really is about a service to the, to the group of students and to the teachers.
Well, and I'd like to see them, you know, opening checking accounts and, you know, I mean, you still have to write a check occasionally, you know.
Learning how to balance the checkbook would be a good thing.
Just the finance part of it, I think I approve of. And we were talking, talking earlier, KP was saying about the jobs in the computer science area growing rapidly. And so I'd like to see how we're going to address that, because we were discussing that a little bit earlier, seeing where that, that job growth is going to be and if we can't target that, whether it's at the center or otherwise. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Just so you know what it is worded as, because in CTE, it's very different. It's worded as information technology is where the computer programming grows, just so you have that in the back of your head. Thank you.
Good. I, I have a few questions. And I'll, I'm going to back up the whole conversation a little bit to something I think Dave kind of alluded to and understanding kind of what our numbers are now. I'd like to, you know, as we're making this big plan to service a lot of kids, I'm not really clear on where we are in terms of number of students we're servicing now versus where we're going. And I think that's kind of important to this process because it does somewhat inform the size of the building that we might use at the outset versus the size we might use in the future and how our financial investment over time might be appropriate. And while I think it's an interesting idea to put fifty-nine million dollars into building one building that would meet our needs in eight years, I don't know if that is the most prudent thing to do, especially since we sort of need to start, you know, to a certain degree, we can't do this overnight. We've got to sort of build up to something. And I'm not really clear where we are on that continuum. So I guess to make a good decision on this, I kind of need to understand better where we are in the continuum.
And that's a, that's a great point because if we know where we're at now, do we need to double enrollment? Do we need to quadruple it to, to eventually fill this space? Because then you kind of know where at least you need to start.
Right. And so I heard, I think I heard you say that we're at thirty-five thousand square feet now and we're servicing six hundred kids in half a day. Is that right? No.
We have the potential to service six hundred kids in a full day. So we, we could, if we are operating at maximum, maximum capacity.
So we have thirty-five thou, thirty-five thousand square feet and if we were at maximum capacity, we, we could serve six hundred kids. And we're not, and we're not even there yet. So then I think two hundred thousand square feet, wow, that's a great goal, but I'm not sure where that, where, where we're appropriate on the timeline. And I'm not trying to put the kibosh, I'm just trying to be realistic in terms of how we spend our money.
And I guess to, also to go along with that, does that, six hundred students, does that also include some of the students that are taking shop and whatnot at the local campuses that aren't using the tech center?
Okay. Currently at our existing Technical Education Center, we offer culinary arts, cosmetology. We offer information technology, some networking courses. When we talk about culinary arts, we also talk about hospitality and tourism. That's one of the leading classes into that. We offer welding, automotive technologies, and we offer a few STEM classes, engineering courses. So when we talk about a two hundred thousand square foot facility, we're talking about more programs. We're not talking about the same programs. We don't have the ability to expand the number of programs that we're offering at the current tech ed center. We're, we're completely landlocked. So we have the potential to say, okay, maybe as a district, we don't want to offer quite as many. And I'll use health science as a good example for us because we started health science at all of our campuses this year. So everybody's offering the year one course, Principles of Health Science. Next year, everybody that wasn't already offering health science will add on medical terminology. But then what do we do in year three? In year three, that's where we really need those partnerships with the hospitals where students get to go and do their clinical rotations. But, but we understand that not all students can give up two class periods a day to do that. We also understand that the hospitals won't allow us to have that many students. We can't send forty kids from all eleven schools. So by moving those junior and senior programs to a Technical Education Center or Center for Advanced Learning, then we're able to service the kids that really can access it because they have it in their schedule. So it's not an apples to apples and I can do a comparison for you before next week, if you would like, that shows what we currently have and what we can service as compared to what we would have long-term at a facility of this nature. Because I think that maybe that's the piece that may be missing of not understanding the program differences. So I can do a better job of that for you.
Right. And I understand, right, that what we're doing right now is we've got, you know, some of these advanced courses at home campuses and we'd like to kind of standardize that and consolidate our resources so that we can offer those advanced courses for multiple campuses and essentially for all campuses because we're doing it at a center. And I, and I think that that's a very good idea and a good use of our resources, particularly our human resources. I just like to understand, really, in terms of numbers, what that really means.
Okay.
And so just to build on that a little bit, one of the things you talked about, you, you mentioned some specs. And I assume what you, I think maybe what you mean by specs is, is what's here in our little booklet on page thirty-seven.
Yes, ma'am.
And you talked about, you mentioned that there were fifteen classroom, fifteen classrooms or fifteen regular classrooms built into the specs.
Yes, ma'am, on page forty.
Okay, on page forty.
Where you see general spaces.
I see. So that's in addition to all the, the specialized program spaces, you have an additional fifteen classrooms?
Yes, ma'am.
And those classrooms would be used for generally that third hour of probably English or I think classes like that.
Right. So we would definitely need a couple of classrooms to service the English during the day. We put in fifteen in case we wanted to move those advanced courses, some of the other district advanced courses, over to that facility as well.
Okay, so that was kind of my next question because there was some talk about that at one point, like that was kind of a real thing. And then I saw less of that in, in this last booklet. So I wondered, is that a, is that, is that something that's being realistically considered? Or is it, it seems parallel to these other things. We're talking about advanced coursework with limited human resources to teach them, but, or maybe limited numbers of students at various campuses. And I do think they exist at multiple campuses, Dave, but sometimes the kids can't take the class because it's not offered. There's only five of them, so they just plain don't have the class.
It is absolutely a very real discussion. When we talk about the extended task force, I'm kind of looking over to make sure that we know that we've included all of curriculum and instruction in those type of conversations and that, what does this look like? Is this the best option? Is it better to offer it at a centralized location? How do we do the, the digital or distance learning? Where do we do this and how do we do it well? And even if we still did a combination of such, if we built a facility wherever, if we built a facility with brand-new technology in it that could facilitate that digital conferencing-
Push it out.
For the event that a kid can't do something. We've done the distance learning this year with three courses through CTE and we can only do it in CTE in the year one where they're not having to be in a shop space. And really, our biggest struggle has been the technology because we just don't have the infrastructure. We heard that tonight earlier. So if we did something like moving it to a centralized facility, we could build to the infrastructure that we could still have that as a blended option.
I hear though, we're going to have that really great infrastructure, wireless at least by, I think he said February or something like that. So by the end of the school year for sure. Could you turn your microphone on when you say that, Mr. Pham, please? Okay, well, all right, one thing, we don't have to get into this now, but another area that I, I think I've mentioned before, but advanced sciences and science lab facilities. This is another area where we have a little bit of inequity, inequity, I believe, across the district in how those spaces are used and the equipment that's available. And, you know, when I see STEM, I, I, I think of advanced sciences. It, you know, some people may be thinking robotics and electronics and things like that, that's excellent. But if we're talking about multivariable calculus, we should be considering advanced chemistry, physics, and these types of things where, and biology, where these kids can, in a three-hour block, they can have a nice lab time. And we don't have that opportunity really at the home campuses. If the kids want to do that, they have to stay after school in most cases to do a lab in those advanced classes. So as we're planning this out, I guess that, that's a thing I don't see on the specs and I wondered about. I like the concept of considering this whole project in the framework of more of a Center for Advanced Learning, as I've heard you refer to it a couple of times, especially if we're targeting our junior and senior level CTE classes and advanced coursework. I think that that still leaves kids with a feeling of being rooted at their home campus, but then having this opportunity for advancement and earning special certificates, earning industry certifications and having, you know, in a way, the prestige of going to that center to, to earn something that's really meaningful. And I think that that's pretty powerful. But it all goes back to advertising it the right way and explaining it to the parents the right way so that kids can get on the, on the path, if you will, early in the process. And, and that's, again, going back to why I'm asking about the numbers because the vision is really great, but we have to get the steps to get to that vision. And I'm, I'm hopeful, but I'm also want to be prudent. And, you know, just like we're not going to rush into something with our technology plans, as we talked about earlier tonight, we have to start in a way that proves the concept and then we have to expand it and, and make sure that we've covered all our bases and, and then we can go full-scale. But anyway, I had Mr. Rice's same question. Okay, so where do you mean to put this? And I heard you, you know, the, read the commentary of the different spots. When I read what you wrote about Lake Olympia Middle School, I thought, okay, but what about all that space where the bus barn is there? And that's a wide-open place. The buses could be parked somewhere else and it is on Highway six. I don't know, that's just a thought that occurred to me. We just bought the Julie Rivers property, so that- to me. We just bought the Julie Rivers property, so that, it's not quite the square footage you're looking for in the end, but it is existing space. And I guess you talked about some comparable costs for repurposing something as opposed to building something new. I just want to be really prudent as we, as we go forward with this in terms of spending money and spending it wisely. So, I guess I made that point. I think that concludes my comments. Mr. Rice, do you have some additional questions?
Not a question, just a comment. I agree with you, Mrs. James, on being prudent. And but at the same time, I think it's a good idea to consolidate all of this in one location. And if the numbers will prove it up, as you ask, I, I think that we should probably give it very serious consideration. It, it appears that there are economies of scale that would make this very viable. And with the passage of House Bill 5, I would imagine that many school districts are looking at doing this. And so, it's an opportunity for us. I know industry is always crying out, well, we need more, we need welders, we need people that actually know how to work with their hands and make things. And so, this is our opportunity to do that. And putting it in a, one of the comments that you made, Ms. Wadasek, was about getting industry partners. And that is really critical. That is really supercritical. If we get some industry partners to come in and support through donating equipment, through scholarships, I know in, at Westbury High School, for example, they had a very successful automotive repair program. And those students graduating out of there were heavily recruited by Ford and Chrysler and General Motors. And they would take promising young students and send them to their factories for training. And then they were, they were very coveted and in demand by all the automotive dealerships here. So, I think it's really a good plan. And everyone has had some good comments for additional consideration. But it's, I think if the numbers prove it up, and if we put it in a, in a visible spot where people are going to see it in the community, then they're going to know that we've got this active program going on. I really like the opportunity to partner with Texas State Technical, Technical College. They have a brand-new facility that will be opening in August of next year. And they, we, we could be well on our way to having a lot of certif, industry certifications that will put these people in the workforce. So, I agree with Mrs. James and Mr. Rosenthal, well, all of my peers here. We need to be prudent and make sure the numbers will prove it. I just have a feeling that you'll be able to demonstrate that. And I've got a, a feeling that the capacity will build, that the students will go to that as House Bill 5 continues to be rolled out and all the school districts get their arms around it and provide a path forward. So, thank you very much.
Ms. James, I just have one other question or comment. You know, one of the things that, I don't know why I hadn't brought this up before, nobody's brought this up. But, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of skills out there that, that are necessary also, not just welding. You know, there's a lot of high-tech stuff here, you know, automotive and welding. But what about some of the, you know, more basic things like electrical and plumbing, that kind of thing? I mean, can't fund those jobs out overseas. And, you know, the way that building is going on around here, that, that's, that's a place that, and, and you can combine that stuff with physics and, and, and some of the, and some of the engineering, you know, really easily.
That is in our architecture and construction, which we currently do not offer at tech ed. But to offer the HVAC and the plumbing, we would have to put that at a center. And so, that's why the architecture and construction piece would be a new program at a, at a new facility. You're absolutely correct in that, that is very hot market. And we know that we're trying to build a lot of facilities here. And quite honestly, human resources to do all of the work has been a concern that our Jacobs Engineering has brought up. And that has impacted our timeline as well. And so, that's our architecture and construction piece would be HVAC, plumbing, and then general architecture and construction, advanced architecture and construction and design classes.
Okay. So, that's all in, in some of those courses?
Yes, sir. And I can prepare for you next week, if you would like to see. And we have all of the pathways with all of the courses designated of what would be at a center. Would that be beneficial for you to actually see the courses? I don't know.
Yeah.
That's, that's quite a bit of detail, but I'm happy to provide that. We have that already finished.
I think that would be interesting. The charts you've given us show all the courses.
But it doesn't, it, it doesn't do a good job of telling you what's where.
It doesn't tell you what's where exactly. It lists the courses, but it doesn't say what's at the campus versus what would be at the center. So...
So, we'll provide those for you before next week. Like I said, they're already finished, and you'll have a real clear picture. I would like to just say ahead of time, and then I'll make note of it in the document for you, that those are the course names on, on the new document that you'll see will become effective in 17, 18. So, I just bring that to your attention, because when you see our course catalog come out for, for 16, 17, the course names haven't all changed yet. And so, I, I want to caution you about looking at two documents side by side when they're really for different years. But I'll be happy to provide that for you.
Thank you. Mrs. Tossan has another question.
So, one last question, and I don't necessarily expect an answer to this tonight, but I would like to know the thoughts about how our academy programs are going to fit into all of this, particularly from a curriculum perspective. Because I know we've discussed that before about making those programs, at least from a curriculum perspective, you know, more exclusive, more advanced. But if we're talking about a center for advanced learning, and we're going to be bringing kids to a facility to take some of those advanced courses, particularly, you talked about health science. I know we have the medical academy. So, how do we see that fitting together going forward?
Yes, ma'am. I can bring you information on that.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anything else for tonight? Thank you, Ms. Wadasek, very much for another nice presentation and a lot of good information. And I guess we'll hear from you again.
I'll see you next week.
See you next week.
Thank you.
Same bat time, same bat channel. All right. So, now we're ready, I believe, for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All of us in favor, please say aye. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.